Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council for Tuesday, October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, how many additions or corrections for you?
Motion to approve.
Tag. Motion by Tim, second by Dave, to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Implication is from Faith Lutheran Church. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council members and people gathered here. If you still feel so moved, please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, bless these people that have come here together tonight, and give them the good strength and the wisdom so that they may have wonderful communication, listening to the the needs back and forth and understanding each other, so that through that understanding, they may drive wisdom and then drive good decisions. Help these decisions, Lord, to benefit the city of Hutchinson and all of its residents. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which exists, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All righty, moving on. Citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Christopher Smith, and I live at thirty-one Main Street North, which is also Let It Grow, the plant store on Main Street. Please excuse me, I had prepared something just because I get nervous public speaking, so I just wanted to write it down, so. My name is Christopher Smith, and I own Let It Grow, the business at thirty-one Main Street North with my best friend and business partner, Tom Fettig. We've been here for almost three years and have enjoyed being a part of the local business community, and I would like to address today the local smoking ordinance and give you some background on what brought me here. Roughly five months ago, a new business moved in next door at thirty-five Main Street on North called Grounded Gardens. Since day one, they moved in and set up tables, chairs, large flags stuck in green bucket of rocks, big ashtray buckets, continually hanging out, smoking cannabis, smoking cigarettes, using foul language. This, the the chairs and the other things got taken care of pretty quickly. The surrounding neighbors thought it was kind of tacky as well, and there were some city ordinances that weren't being followed. Ever since then, the smoking of cigarettes and cannabis continued in front of their business for weeks and weeks. Eventually, there were enough complaints that the police were called numerous times. Then the table and ashtray were moved to the back of the building where they proceeded to smoke cigarettes and set up a bong while they hung out and smoked. This table was not only right next to the back door, but it was also next to the gas meter, which also concerned other neighbors. There were at least four neighboring businesses that I know of that were upset and concerned over not only the exposure to smoke, but to the optics of having people loitering and smoking in front of business entrances. In the interest of maintaining a good relationship with my neighbors, I tried to talk to Shane, one of their employees, and explain the smoking ordinance and communicate how it bothered neighboring businesses. I was told I was the only one who cared. I'm not moving because you want me to, and he's not a sheep. That's what he explained to me, that he's not a sheep and will not move, and that I was just jealous of them. He asked if I wanted to talk to the owner, and I said, please, absolutely. She came out and said I was harassing her and that she was calling the police on me, then stormed inside. Since then, the chief of police offered to mediate a meeting between us in the hopes of working something out. I was all for that. She refused. Eventually, after weeks of noncompliance, they were told by another officer to move the ashtray again, and I believe a citation was issued. Shane from Grounded Gardens then took a tape measure and measured fifteen feet from their door and began smoking right in the middle of my driveway. Just a little background, if you're not familiar with which store is mine, I face the theater parking lot, and I am between Crow River Floral and thirty-five Main Street. So my driveway is about twenty feet wide, eighteen feet wide, and so he proceeded to stand in the middle of my driveway, stare into our business, and smoke cigarettes to antagonize us. Since then, he stands there every day at least once an hour, right in the middle, facing our building, antagonizes, and being confrontational. I've seen women with baby carriers have to walk through this clouds of smoke, children and parents trying to take photos in front of the butterfly mural, not to mention blocking our parking lot where customers park because their employees at Grounded Gardens leave their cars parked out in front of, on Main Street all day long, occupying all the parking spaces and ignoring the two-hour limit, and oftentimes not even parking in a parking spot, but right in front of our building. I've been in contact with Clint Sherping, the building owner, who has told them not to use the back door because they only rent the front suite. There are other businesses in this building, and other businesses have issue with this as well. Clint has told them not to smoke up back, and now he's been trying to contact Bridget Pinder, the owner, to address this, and she will not answer his calls or return texts. Clint Sherping supports my decision to address the council. He feels the same way I do, that it is not good for local businesses to have people loitering in front, smoking, for the same reasons I suggested. So why I am here is I'm suggesting that the city changes the smoking ordinance from fifteen feet from an entrance to twenty-five feet. Twenty-five is the distance of the state regulation. It would be enough to keep my neighbor from continuing to negatively impact our business and my home. Just a little background, too. I I am not able to open windows in my bedroom. I'm not able to open windows in my living room, which faces Main Street, simply because if I do, the smoke wafts into my house and makes my clothes stink. My partner is a disabled veteran. He's a Marine Corps veteran, and he has lesions in his lungs from being exposed to burn pits. That's another reason where I'm a little bit, you know, a little bit defensive and a little bit concerned about, you know, secondhand smoke constantly being, you know, blown in our area. It's ridiculous to me that this much effort, energy, and resource has been wasted because Grounded Gardens thinks being a good neighbor, like everyone else who works on Main Street, equates to being a sheep. I don't care what they do in their business. I don't, you know, it's not my business to what they're doing, but the way that they've been negatively impacting the surrounding businesses and interrogating people, going up to other people, asking them, oh, did you say anything about us? Did you, you know? I just feel as a local business owner that it shouldn't be that much of an explanation. I think that most people, I know there's some business owners on the council, I can, you know, if you can imagine somebody just standing out in front of your, you know, business, smoking cigarettes, you know, smoking cannabis, swearing. It's just, it's not good for the city. It's not good for my business. It's not good for my home. And all it would take is for them to literally walk across the alley and smoke like everybody else who smokes that that has a that works on Main Street. So I would just like to ask the council to maybe consider increasing the ten-foot limit that would keep this person from antagonizing us and having a negative effect on my business.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. All righty, anybody else? Okay, we have approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes of October eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Approval of resolution number one, five, seven, eight, zero. Resolution to sell surplus property, that's V C for people. B is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, eight, two. Resolution for certificate of special assessment from the city of Hutchinson to McLeod County Auditor. C is approval of items for Dale Street improvements, projects, letting number one, project number twenty-five dash oh one. And there's two resolutions underneath there. The resolution number one, five, seven, eight, seven. Resolution ordering preparation of report on improvements. And resolution number one, five, seven, eight, eight. Resolution receiving reports and calling for hearing on improvements. D is approval of items for the two thousand twenty-five street improvement projects, letting number two, project number twenty-five dash oh two. Two resolutions underneath there. We have resolution number one, five, seven, eight, nine. Resolution ordering preparation of report on improvements. And resolution number one, five, seven, nine, zero. Resolution receiving reports and calling for hearing on improvements. E is approval of airport grant agreement, and that's resolution number one, five, seven, eight, three. Resolution to authorization to execute Minnesota DOT grant agreement one, zero, five, eight, one, two, one, for airport improvements. And resolution number one, five, seven, eight, four. Authorization of executing Minnesota DOT grant one, zero, five, eight, one, seven, zero, for airport improvements. And resolution number one, five, seven, eight, five. Authorization to execute Minnesota DOT grant agreement one, zero, five, eight, one, seven, one, for airport improvements. F is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, six, eight. I'm sorry. Just let's see. Resolution number one, five, seven, eight, six. Resolution of proving disposal of street department surplus property. G is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, nine, one. Resolution for traffic control device, no left turn on School Road Southwest. H is approval issuing temporary liquor license to the Bobbing Barber Brewery Company on November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. I has approval of authorization, request for proposal on city center city. J is approval of Creekside Gold Storage Expansion Project. K is approval of purchasing vacuum extraction equipment. L has claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything anybody wants pulled off?
Mayor, council, we need to remove item number B. We have an update to that.
Item B?
And mayor, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on item G.
I'll make a motion to approve the balance. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the balance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. B, Matt?
Mayor, council, on your desk, there was an updated resolution. There was an additional assessment to certify. It's on the roll. It's T R two thousand twenty-four. I believe this is a Public Works project that was added to the to the list. So that's why we had it pulled off the consent agenda, just so you can approve that revised resolution.
Motion to approve the revised resolution. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Tim?
Well, I'm just looking at this, the resolution, I looked at it. I was just wondering what the basis of it, if there were higher accident incidents or if it was causing congestion or what exactly was happening at that. And it's more for the public to be able to explain it because we're gonna have a hard time for a little bit of time explaining, hey, you can't make a left turn, and how are we gonna enforce one? And two is signage on, to make sure people see that at an appropriate time.
The conversation we've had is with the school district, and it's during drop-off and pickup time. So you'll note it's during a certain time in the morning, certain time in the afternoon, because there is about a ten-to-twelve-minute window, both time periods, where it's particularly tight. And and the thought is without being able to just widen a road or add a bunch of turn lanes, signage, a couple of signs both at their exit and then on the street itself, north and southbound. It's kind of a low-cost alternative to try concept. Certainly a partner with the school district in this and making sure they're communicating with their their parents, those dropping off at school. So we're gonna rely pretty heavily on them. If if this passes tonight, we'll work on getting the signage and things in place. They'll work on the communication plan. Tom and I know the officers, we've talked about, you know, just some enforcement initially, a lot of it just via warning, not ticketing, but just trying to prevent, again, accidents, trying to keep that exit entrance safe during those school times, and especially that critical time in the morning and that critical time in the afternoon, and a focus around Tiger Elementary in particular is where the activity and where the signage will be placed.
Because this is going into West Parking Lot, correct?
It's for the out of Tiger itself. There's really two entrances there, yeah.
So you're not
Because you kind of noticed the same problem over by the middle school.
You could make the case the high school, the middle school have issues too, but the thought is before we go and, you know, add, let's see if the one even has an impact from that standpoint. And if so, we've talked about those other two could possibly be added also in time. You know, we're a few years out from the School Road, you know, street project, so we we didn't wanna defer the problem, but we thought, you know, a little bit of signage, we can probably be successful and maybe impacting it in a good way.
I know. There is a there's a lot of stacking in the morning for the, for them trying to make a left turn.
Yeah, it only takes one car making a left to kind of really tie things up. You throw in winter conditions. That compounds it, so we're we're gonna try this.
We haven't had any accidents out there.
You know, maybe there have been some. I don't know if there's any been reported, so.
It wasn't so much about the accident. It was one about the public information so we could get that out right away, but also, because this is a big change in that area, and secondly, is enforcement. And if we're going to eventually tackle the other schools, because I saw this and went to, we have the same issue across all three of those areas, and you're right, implementing one at a time would probably be a smarter bet here than to be able to monitor it and see how it works. So thank you. That was all the updating.
And I would say we've done this from time to time, and we've done other traffic control changes. We have put something on our Facebook page that, hey, you know, this is now a four-way stop or whatever, and so we could
We do that partnership with schools. Posting with the city, the police departments, the school districts, you know, we'll hit social media website. But just, you know, the kind of memos out to the parents and things to, we'll likely have the signs in place and have them ready, but we'll cover them until we're ready to, you know, that we feel the communication plan is in place, and then we can kind of unveil them at whatever particular time of day we're ready to roll it out.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, resolution one, five, seven, nine, one.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. We'll skip down communications. We do not have any unfinished business. First reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash eight, five, zero. Ordinance related to the cannabis regulations.
Thank you, mayor and council members. As you recall, this ordinance was tabled from the last council meeting, primarily because there was a discussion about the hours that sales should be allowed to occur. And the consensus at the end of that council meeting was that the hours for the sale of cannabis should try to mirror as closely as possible the sale, the hours of sale for off-sale alcohol. Just how the cannabis statute is written and how the off-sale statute is written, those hours weren't able to completely jive with each other. But staff did take a look at it. We tried to get the hours as closely as possible. You can see the proposal is to allow sales from ten a.m. to ten, pardon me, eight a.m. to ten p.m. Monday through Saturday, and also addressing sales for Sunday, and that would occur from ten a.m. to nine p.m. on Sunday.
Which I think is what we talked about, and we don't have any jurisdiction over the Sunday hours, so.
Right.
And this is just kind of reminder both for the council and the public, you know, the state has really handcuffed the city on what we can and can't regulate, and I think what we've put in our ordinance is stuff that that we can and the stuff that the council has is comfortable with. I think the only other alternative is where you can prohibit, you know, locations within town, which we we made the decision we weren't going to to do that. So once again, this would be a first reading. A second reading will most likely be on our next agenda, which would be then considered for approval.
Motion to approve, first reading.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, by Chad to approve first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The both say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. New business, resolution number one, five, seven, nine, two. Resolution approving the two thousand twenty-five employee benefit package.
Just push the button.
Nowhere business, evening, mayor and council. All right, so last year, we brought something similar for review for two thousand twenty-four for the benefits package. And Matt and I agreed that it would be helpful to bring this forward each year, even when benefits don't change a ton, like this year. Just recognizing that there can be changes and so that you are all aware of what we're offering our employees. In your packet, I did include a high-level summary of the benefits that are offered to our full-time staff. This is actually a similar sheet to what I provide to individuals that are being recruited or have just been hired to kind of give a high-level picture of what's all offered for them. So no major changes for a lot of the benefits this year. Biggest one is with health insurance. So health insurance, obviously a changing landscape. The goal is to be as consistent with our plans as possible while keeping the budget in check and still offering a really rich benefit to employees. We switched to Health Partners a couple of years ago, which you'll recall, had a really great rate initially, had quite a hike last year, and then this year's claims have looked a lot better, so we received a four percent increase on health insurance. In order to kind of keep sustainability in mind, we started looking at a little bit of slight plan adjustments for the the two plans in place. And that is just to kind of keep, again, sustainability in mind. But the first one, so we have two different plans, both are high-deductible technically, health plans that can be offered with it, with an HSA. The higher deductible health plan has an embedded deductible, which is a whole nother thing that I will happily teach you about if you'd like to to know more. But the IRS sets limits each year on what what those numbers have to be. So in order to buy us a couple more years before we have to update those every single time, we were looking to move that plan from a thirty-two-hundred, sixty-four-hundred up to thirty-five-hundred, seven-thousand. That gives a little bit of a teeny little premium cut by going up with that deductible. But the the biggest thing that we're changing this year is going to be the split between the employer contribution and the employee contribution for the lower plan. Higher plan will stay the same, eighty percent, twenty percent split, so eighty percent covered by the employer, twenty percent covered by the employee on a monthly basis. So when we look at that two-thousand, four-thousand plan, that deductible stays the same as it was last year, so two thousand for an individual, four thousand for anything beyond that. But where where that plan will see a difference is going to be that employer-employee contribution split. We are going to adjust that from eighty percent, twenty percent split to a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent split. The biggest goal, at least from my perspective here, is to create separation between the two plans. There really wasn't a whole lot of separation, which really drove a lot of employees to just one plan. We want to see a little bit more balance between the two plans, just because that is a kind of a better model to have. So we spent time chatting with the leadership team as well as the wage committee, which is includes staff members on there, and everyone felt like it was still a good move, still a great benefit to offer, and the premiums were still doable or in line for the benefit that's being provided. So I'll pause and ask if there's any questions or anything that I can go back to and elaborate on.
I had one question on the, because you said it's in the deductible change is to satisfy the IRS requirements for the embedded deductible
Correct.
for this year and hopefully one to two years to come. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so so that higher deductible health plan, if you enroll as a family, let's say it's, so I'll I'll explain my my family. We we take this plan. So there's myself, my husband, and my two kiddos. If any one of us was receiving more care than the other, we would have to hit that embedded deductible of thirty-two-hundred instead of that full family deductible of sixty-four-hundred. On the two-thousand, four-thousand plan, any family that's on that automatically has to hit four thousand dollars, regardless of if they're all using it or only one person is using it. So there's a little bit of a benefit to have that embedded deductible. The IRS moves what that limit is, just like they changed the the HSA contributions, the maximums. They moved it from, it was like thirty-one and then thirty-two last year, and then this year they're gonna move it to thirty-three. So we opted to move to thirty-five to just buy us a little bit more time for consistency's sake.
With the goal of not having to change that every single year as the IRS does it, we we figured let's just put it at thirty-five, and hopefully that will buy us
Couple of years.
Couple of years, because IRS updates that every year, and that's the the biggest reason for going from a thirty-two-hundred to thirty-five-hundred.
They they also
At a minimum, it was gonna have to be thirty-three-hundred.
Yeah. They also dictate for that lower, that two-thousand, four-thousand plan, in order to have an HSA, they also dictate what that looks like. We still have some wiggle room there, but they do kind of dictate what those levels look like. We just haven't had to to adjust those yet.
Good. Thank you.
Great. I would ask
Other questions for Kelly? Entertainer motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve the benefit package. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The both say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kelly. Purchase of new fire ladder truck platform.
Good evening, mayor and council. Kelly, I was hoping you were gonna have your computer open and run. No, I was kidding. So bear with me for a second here. A lot of what we're gonna discuss tonight, though, or
Are you looking for my
I got it.
Computer?
Keyboard.
Okay.
Most of what we're gonna discuss, or the presentation anyway, is kind of a summary of what was in your council packets, the two thousand twenty-four evaluation summary, so just as a reference point. And then again, bear with me for a second here to pull this up.
Pass the first test. It's always a pressure.
Pass phrase. As this is booting up here, the this whole project or started, excuse me, the committee was formed in February of two thousand twenty-three to kind of figure out what our, what our needs, what our needs were, what our options were. As just a short history lesson there, the our annual, or most of our trucks, our big equipment, is on a twenty-five-year replacement schedule, the big trucks, the ladder truck and the two engines, and the, hang on one second, Kelly, or Melissa? Do you know where the the drive, the drive is here? I got a zip drive.
What's the name of it?
But it should
Fire G.
You better, you're you better upload it in the computer.
That's a good sound.
I I could have brought my hammer along that I usually use on my computer. I I could have brought my hammer along that I usually use on my computer.
Could have had you email it to me, Gary. Okay, so again, our uh committee was formed back in February of twenty twenty-three to kind of explore um this whole project so we could get a jumpstart on what what we needed, what the timelines were gonna be, et cetera. And that could be one of those nights.
It's never been on half the fire departments that counsel.
Yeah, yeah, so uh the committee, uh with the chairperson is Lieutenant Chris Dossel, he's here today, he's gonna be the one. These are the experts with the truck questions. So as we get a little farther into this, and if you guys have truck-specific stuff, um Lieutenant Chris Dossel, I'll have him come up here. He can help answer those questions. But these guys all um uh kind of a varying level but of of uh seniority there, but most have been on for quite a while. And have have a long history with the fire department and are expert, experts in various levels here of the trucks. Um they, most of them were able to go to FDAC, which is down in Indianapolis, that's an international conference. To uh kick the tires, look at everything, talk to manufacturers um across the board to kind of start the process, start the ball rolling. Um same thing we did back in twenty fifteen, I think it was. When we were um gonna start specing an engine out, we sent them down there, because you can literally see everything from every manufacturer. Every service provider in the um in the world almost, but for sure in the United States. And again, they started in twenty twenty-three, and then from then till now, uh they've worked with a couple of different manufacturers, primarily Pearson Rosenbauer. And then have conducted multiple visits to other fire departments, looking at trucks, getting feedback, getting information from them. So. Um couple of the things, or a few of the things that we wanted to go over, and I was kind of pulling up here and talk about them, but from our current truck to what, uh and we went down and I'll talk about the refurbished option here in a little bit, but some of the needs were to improve the aerial operations of the truck that we currently have. So this is gonna, the what we're proposing is an improved truck over that. So maneuverability, the function of the apparatus itself, the aerial, the hydraulic systems. Uh ergonomics, the pump panel, I know Mayor Forsery, you're familiar with our truck. It's very um intimidating and antique in nature. If you're not a seasoned pump operator, you cannot operate that truck. Um and then cab space, we wanted to have a six-person cab, which is equivalent to what we have right now. Uh make it a little bit easier to get in and out of, a little more cab room inside, improve the compartment layout, as there's not a lot of compartment uh space on the one that we currently have. Uh improve lighting, and obviously that's just time there from two thousand one, when our current truck was built, to now. There's been a lot of improvements in the last twenty years on a lot of this stuff. It just kind of hap- some of it just kind of happens organically. Uh some type of generator-inverter system improvement over what we have. And then a two-thousand gallon per minute pump, which is kind of the standard in the uh aerial ladder truck world. Uh but we just wanted to make sure there's been a lot of other departments that have kind of been shrinking that to seventeen fifty or fifteen hundred. And um Tim, to your point in our committee, uh or our meeting beforehand here, ISO, some some of that is uh benchmarks we have to hit for the ISO ratings as well. The pump capacity is one of those. And then a three-hundred gallon tank, which is a standard tank on that, but that's a number, it's gotta be three hundred or more, or you don't hit the ISO classifications. Uh and then NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, the standards and guidelines that they set forth for truck uh apparatus, that it meets uh all of those requirements. Um emissions, uh we talked about this a little bit at the last or two council meetings ago. Um and there's a little bit of a timing piece that we're, which is part of the reason why we're in front of you here today. Uh but there is a federal emissions change coming on the diesel engines. Um twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven is when that goes into full. Uh they'll probably implement it kind of across the board like they did, or sorry, in phases like they did the the previous one. The commercial industry, uh emergency equipment, et cetera, that might be on different timelines, but all of the engine manufacturers are starting. They're drawing the line in the sand here at the end of the year, and they're starting with changing the emissions in preparation for that coming up. So. Um the one of the manufacturers, Pierce, which is the higher or more expensive one, they're unable to get us a pre-emissions engine anymore. Um just because of their agreements with their provider, their uh with Cummins. And then um Cummins is also who we're working with, uh with the Rosenbauer, but they're they are able to guarantee us a pre-emissions engine as long as, our deadline is the twenty-fourth, I think, which is a couple of days. So they've already extended that multiple times, but um and that's about a fifty to sixty thousand dollar item.
Mike, you mean, so we're getting a pre-emissions, are we gonna have to change our engines up or do modifications once those?
No, so. So the, it's it's when that engine is manufactured. So if we back up to two thousand and seven, uh we did the exact same thing actually on that engine from, we call it our Johnny Cash fire truck, because it's two thousand and seven engine. A two thousand and eight chassis, and we took delivery on Valentine's Day in two thousand and nine, because my wife wasn't happy that I wasn't gonna be there. Um but we, so that was pre all the, well, that was even before death. That was the first evolution of of the changes. But had we waited a year, and that was back in two thousand and seven, it was about an eighty thousand dollar increase. And they're concerned that a similar thing is gonna happen, because if back then it required the trucks or the manufacturers to redesign their truck, widen the frames, make more room for all this emissions equipment. So there wouldn't be, so as long as our engine is manufactured before that date, it's fine as it is. If we wait and it's after that manu- engine manufacturing date, then we are subject to to whatever the next set of codes or regulations are.
Best way to explain it gets grandfathered in.
Grandfathered in, yeah, exactly. Um so first we started, we spent a lot of time on the refurbishing side of it. That was a um an avenue that the Fleet Committee wanted to us to explore, and us as well to make sure what our options actually were. Um and I alluded to some of that information in that uh handout in your packet, but the initial numbers were about two hundred thousand dollars was a more than, I don't know, not to sugarcoat it, but more of a cosmetic. Uh refurb, and to do anything of substantial nature, meaning hydraulics, pumps, valving, things that have, that are not gonna go beyond twenty-five years. That number, uh the most recent number got up to rated four hundred thousand, and that doesn't touch the electronics on that truck. Uh and they said they won't touch the electronics on that truck. Um aerials have to be certified by the manufacturer, so there's some things you can do to them from a repair standpoint. And some things you can't. And this truck has a, uh they call it a multiplex uh computer system on it that runs, well, it runs the entire truck. So it has five computer modules on it and wiring that runs the length of the truck and you know, that stuff has a sunset on it, and they've already said, if that, if there's any kind of major failure point on that, you're done. Meaning the truck's just inoperable, and there's no fix for it. So even, so we could put four hundred, almost four hundred thousand dollars into it and still not have a the electronics updated and it could, you know, if if that would fail, that would be right now when we're done. And so, so our hope with that, or I mean, to me, I guess, and our committee kind of looked at that as well, and and we don't feel that's a good alternative. And their their estimation was that would probably, even if you did that route, you put four hundred thousand into it, that would buy you five to eight years. At the end of the day, that's that's gonna push that truck over the thirty-year mark. Um so again, that's not our, not our suggestion anyway, but I'll take any questions or other thoughts you guys have on that before we move on. So we worked primarily with two manufacturers, Pearson and Rosenbauer, um and worked in them with detail vetted outs. Uh they're not identical trucks, they are different with, because each one has, in in the spirit of trying to improve the hydraulics and the operations of the aerial component, which was one of our, uh one of the things that we wanted to accomplish on this. Um Rosenbauer has an articulating tip on it, like so the bucket has an articulating function on it. Pierce does not have that. Pierce has a mid-mount truck, and they make a good mid-mount truck, which allows for some different uh angles and maneuverability of that truck. So that's an advantage uh to the Pierce, and the articulating tips an advantage to the Rosenbauer, uh but they're different. Um and I'll expand on that here in just a minute, unless you have a question on that. Um both of these manufacturers utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative uh purchasing program, which um follows Minnesota state statutes. In fact, that Sourcewell is a technically an entity of Minnesota government. Um but, so to go back in time here a little bit, you know, used to with purchases of this uh of this size, we used to have to have comparative bids, um sealed bids, et cetera. And that's how it was always done. And then in two thousand sixteen, I think with our most recent new truck that used a buying cooperative, was an HGAC Hutchinson Galvat, um or Hutchinson, sorry, Houston. Can't remember what it was, HGAC Buying Group Cooperative like this, um that, so what, the way that works is that group um analyzes the data, so these manufacturers submit the details of their truck, a detailed list of all the components going into that truck. And that there's dollars associated with each one of those components to give you for lack of a better term, kind of a state bid pricing. So if if you have identical trucks, which you're never gonna have identical trucks on these, because they're custom, and they're different manufacturers, but the components going into them, so you're gonna pay the same price for the siren, you're gonna pay the same price for the light bar, you're gonna pay the same price for the engine, et cetera, from this manufacturer to that manufacturer. How you lay it out, obviously is gonna gonna change, or how you option it out, maybe is a better way to say it, is gonna change your price points a little bit. Um but both of these companies um uh use the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, so uh that is a fair comparison between the two. Um questions or thoughts on that?
Easy way to explain that, we've talked about from time to time when we've gone and and purchased equipment, and we've said we've got it on the state bid, and what the state is saying, that this is the best price for this piece of equipment. Sourcewell is an alternative to do that, of which the state has certified as a viable option. So the state is saying, these are the best prices that you can find for these pieces of equipment. Those are things that Mark's bets for us to, I think we gotta have agreement through Sourcewell and so. Just for both the council and the public um understanding of that.
Now, Tim, you brought that up about if it was on the state bid, and that kind of answers, answers your question.
It it's pretty common with specialized equipment like this, because it's not going down an assembly line, it's not a a cookie cutter stamped, you know, identical item uh that they are's custom, so that's why this uh exists, to be honest with you. And it it allows, I mean, we would have never been able to do this in years past. You'd never be able to work with two vendors and get a number, because they're not gonna give you a number, because you'd be trying to, they'd be waiting for the bid process. So this actually allows you to go through the process early and kind of um sort things out and and hammer out some of those details, so. Uh build times, everything post-COVID has changed drastically on that. It used to take about a year for a fire truck. Uh the Rosenbauer is a two-year, the contract that um that they have proposed is a two-year build, the Pierce is a four-year build. So a two-year will put us a delivery of about the very end of twenty twenty-six or this early twenty twenty-seven on the Rosenbauer. The Pierce obviously would be an additional two years beyond that. Uh we talked about the federal emissions concerns and the costs associated with that. Uh and then one other thing that I mentioned on the, what was in your packet was the t- timing is critical because of that we have three big pieces of equipment over there, two engines and the ladder truck. Um you know, all of which even the engines now, when they come due for replacement, you know, they're they're gonna be over a million dollars, I guarantee it, because I know some of the local small departments around us have just gotten trucks in the last year or this this past year or the year before, and they're already over a million dollars. Uh which is frustrating and ridiculous to say, and we're we're as frustrated as anybody that that these prices are where they're at, but it's it's crazy what the industry um has done over the last four or five years here now. But we're trying also, this timing will help kind of spread those three trucks out, so we're not stacked on top of each other, uh which is a huge thing. So this truck is a hundred percent city-owned. The two engines that I'm referring to are split fifty-fifty, so half city, half rural. Uh which is good and bad. I mean, obviously that spreads our cost, which is nice for for us, the city. Um but it also means you got to plan out those, timing of those very closely with the rural entities, because they also have a couple of other trucks that are only rural. And they have concerns of what stacking them as well. So we really try to space them out, so they're not stacked on top of each other. Um and I know there was a comment in the la- or the council meeting that this uh topic was brought up. So the two thousand and one Pierce aerial that we have right now. Um that presumably we'd go forward with with the proposal, that would be decommissioned and and most likely sold at auction, which is kind of the normal practice for that. Um value, I know that was a question as well. I looked a little bit over the last couple of weeks, you're seeing them bring hundred thousand-ish, maybe a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty. Um I don't know, I, that's probably close to what it might be worth, I'm not sure.
Mike, would there be any value of keeping that?
Um, no.
A hundred thousand dollars on a two-point-five-million-dollar truck.
Yeah.
And we're looking five years down, ten years down the road. Yes, it's out of date, but now you have a backup. I I'm just asking that question, I'm not a, you know.
No, I I appreciate the question. Um the, one, we don't have space for it. Um we are tight over there, so there there is literally no space for it. Um two, that truck uh normally runs about eight to ten thousand dollars per year of maintenance. Um this year, that's gonna be about double. We got some repairs that popped up during um its annual inspection that have to be taken back to the factory to fixed, or to get fixed. So we're probably looking at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars this year alone, just on that truck. So um I I, no, I don't think, if we had all kinds of shop space and wanted one parked in the back row, I guess we could, we could look at that, but I don't think that um it's not gonna serve us when it, at the end of the day, it's a, it's a precision piece of emergency equipment, and it needs to be an engine, it, you could do that. You could, you could argue that an engine would be a good one to to have as a backup, just because they're more versatile, but the ladder truck, I don't think that um I don't think that that's a good option for us, so.
Okay.
Okay. Um well, let me just back up. So before, there, I only have two more slides, just some pictures, which don't uh pictures are pictures. So I guess the question is right now, do you have, on what we went over um or specific questions on the truck, and I can have Chris come up here to answer things. Um what, what questions do you guys have right now? Or what answers would you like to have before you can think this through, I guess?
Mike, can you maybe address the fact for our need for an aerial, aerial truck? Um you know, somebody sitting at home may go, well, I grew up in this town, we never had a piece of equipment like this, why does Hutchinson need this piece of equipment?
So when I first got on, um twenty-plus years ago, we had a um a seventy-five-foot stick, which was kind of a death-defying experience, Gary, you can.
One hundred. That was a hundred.
Hundred-foot stick.
And actually, to Tim's question, actually, our old Sea Graves truck went to Winstead. And they had it, and I think they did get rid of it.
They did get rid of it. They've, they've got um a, an airwa- platform like similar to what we have. But anyway, we uh, so with the commercial that we have, the commercial industry that we have in town, and then also to your point on the ISO ratings and some of the insurance requirements, you have to have um that piece of equipment to be able to service your uh infrastructure of your community. So um if you look specifically at our occupied buildings, so Park Towers and Evergreen are high-rise occupied buildings. Um a hundred-foot aerial device like, like the one we, or this one we're proposing and the one we've had allows us to get to the top floor of that building, of both of those buildings, um which is a Allows us to get to the top floor of that building, of both of those buildings, um, which is a. At least from our opinion, is a critical component of its function.
So a lot of it has to do with the infrastructure within a, a certain city.
If all our buildings were one or two or levels, we wouldn't need an aerial truck, no.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions or comments? Um, so just to, this was the blueprint of, this is the truck we've been working on through Rosenbauer, so this is the. Proposal item B. I don't know why you can see it. Looks cosmetically from the outside pretty similar to our other one as far as kind of its, uh, just general layout. Um, to give you an idea what we're talking about on that articulating tip. This is what it looks like, this isn't the truck, obviously this is a different truck, but that tip allows you to go. Over, if you look at the picture in the lower, lower right corner, a lot of our commercial buildings. Have a parapet wall, so you have that outside wall and that three-foot, four-foot, six-foot drop down to the roof deck surface. Which right now is, you basically put your bucket up there and either. Repel with your hands down or, uh, jump down depending on the height of it. So this allows you to go up and over that parapet and get your, um, bucket down to the roof deck, so. This will be a huge, uh, and this is why this was also the one that we, uh, the one that the committee. Was proposing as their, as their first choice, it was the lowest dollar one of the two, but also. This function is a little bit of a game changer in the industry as far as. Um, safety and just functionality of how the truck operates. That is the last slide I have, so. Further questions or if you have anything for Chris, I can have him come up here and answer some as well.
Whether it's you, Mike, or Andy, I don't know if you wanna touch on financing payment of. You know, what we're looking at is just over two-point-one million dollar, um, piece of equipment.
So, um, I can, so as we talked in a couple council meetings ago, this. Um, there's no upfront dollars on this truck, so twenty twenty-four, there'd be zero dollars, uh, out of pocket. Because of the timing of kind of how they do their build schedule, um, there'd be a chassis payment in, when they start. Production on the chassis or get to a certain point on the chassis. And I don't know if you have those dollars, Andy, or I can take, but there'd be a partial payment in twenty twenty-five. For that, well then when they start on the aerial portion of it, there's a second. Payment on that, so that would be in twenty, more than likely, early twenty twenty-six. And then, uh, like a progress payment in late twenty-six and then the final completion payment, that's right, is that right? Late twenty-six or early twenty-seven.
Cause they have those, it's six hundred, six hundred and forty-one thousand, and that's six eighty-eight, and then there's some deductions have paid. On that delivery point to Minnesota.
If you hit those, so if, if you pay your, and I didn't have that noted on there, but if you pay the chassis payment, the first payment on time. There's a deduction and then the aerial payment on time, there's a deduction, I think it's about thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, it's thirty-six thousand by the.
Uh, it's about thirty-six thousand, so. Your, the total funding, if we hit those markers, I guess it'd be two, uh, two million ninety-four thousand. Would be the total dollars out of pocket. Um, some funding options and Andy's done a lot of work on this and you can jump in if you need, or if you want to. Um, but we're looking at. Well, do you wanna explain this? Uh, the GO equipment bonds, cash reserves. Um, an interfund loan between, uh, from the water and sewer funds. And then proceeds from the sale of the decommissioned truck when that happens. Uh, so a combination of all of those, and I think, you know, we can address those. As the process goes or, um, as the year goes, I guess. See, I knew if I left it vague, he'd step in.
We did something similar back in, I think, two thousand six with the liquor store where they did that big upgrade expansion. We borrowed money from the water and sewer plants and then they, uh, the liquor fund repaid those loans over the course of, I think, fifteen years. We could do something similar utilizing our own monies, repaying our own funds rather than, um. Issuing GO bonds, with the GO bonds, that would be an option as well, but it's a little less flexible. We'd have to issue those bonds and probably sit on them for a couple months before a payment might be due. With using our internal funds, we can write a check when, when that chassis is done and ready, we can write a check and, and, uh, not be in. Incurring that interest expense that we would if we issued bonds ahead of time. So that's an option we can look at, those two funds, water and sewer definitely have some funds available. Um, so we can look at a combination of cash on hand in our capital projects fund, we have some. Undesignated LGA we, we receive every year, we can use some of that, um, so yeah, we definitely have some options. And we can come back to you guys at another date and, and firm that up, but definitely looks like we could. Uh, use some reserves like Tim you were looking at, uh, asking a couple, uh, meetings ago in addition to debt.
Thanks, Andy. All right, um, so if you have, if you have any further questions, please, uh, holler now, otherwise I will, uh. Shut my stuff down here and I'll let you guys, uh, hash it out or however you wanna, whatever you wanna do.
It's a simple move that we purchased the fire truck.
I would second.
We have a motion. And seconded by Chad. Any other discussion? I think that, uh, we'll just have Andy come back with some options of, uh. We have some time to figure that out, so him come back with some options for, for payment. Any other discussion?
Appreciate the time you guys put in to research this and find the least expensive with the best options, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, well, thank you, yeah, that's. These guys have, I don't even wanna know how many hours they've got into doing this, they put in a lot of time for sure, so. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call motion, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, setting special meeting to canvas election results.
Mayor Council, um, obviously we have our general election that's coming up, um, early next month and is a. Part of that is we do need to canvass those election results. And so, um, the timeframe in which we can do that falls within when, when we're gonna have a couple meetings, and so we're looking at doing that. Prior to our budget work, or, yeah, prior to our budget workshop on November twelfth at, uh, three forty-five. Yes, you said that.
I would make a motion to set that as a meeting. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to set that as a meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post a name, motion carries. Uh, recent setting city council meeting set for December twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Mayor Council, I know, uh, almost every year when we get to our second meeting in December, we always are kinda keep an eye on when Christmas is. Um, our meeting this year is set to fall on Christmas Eve, which I think we would all find to be very enjoyable to come and, uh. Have a council meeting on Christmas Eve, um.
Want us to get beat up?
That's why we put it on the agenda for discussion. Um, but obviously knowing it falls as close to a holiday as it, as it does, um, we wanted to bring it in front of the council for consideration of. Changing that meeting date and with certain deadlines for public hearings and other projects are going on, I'd like to do that now, so then. Staff can prepare now for, you know, potential projects that may be coming from the council for. Consideration, and so our, our initial thought was, I'm assuming that, you know, later that week is not gonna work. When Christmas falls or if you get in the next week and then you get in New Year's, so either Monday, the twenty-third. Or Thursday, the nineteenth, I thought would be, um, two options. Um, to avoid other meetings that would be occurring, so.
Well, the twenty-third is technically Festivus if you celebrate that.
I don't, so.
Tim, Tim's wondering.
Um, but I would prefer the nineteenth, well, I mean, if people are going somewhere for the holiday, they might not figure it the twenty-third, but.
I'd say the nineteenth too. What do you guys think?
Open to, to make it available to whoever needs to be convenienced. So I'm, I'm fine with whatever you get.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat. Set that meeting for the nineteenth of December, two thousand twenty-four, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post a name, motion carries. Reports from committees, boards or commissions, uh, we have the City of Hutchinson financial report. And investment report for September of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, staff update, Chief Jefferson, you have anything for us tonight? Kelly, you have anything else?
Uh, just to thank you to the three young club for subsidizing CPR training that staff were able to participate in earlier in October, so thanks to them.
All right, so noted, Andy, you got anything else for us?
Nothing.
All righty.
Nothing else.
All righty, um. Chad, let's start with you tonight.
I have not had any committee meetings since last night, so, um, yeah, I don't have anything to add tonight.
Okay, uh, Tim?
Uh, haven't had any committee meetings, the library, I spoke with the library director just about the repairs on the wall and the flooring and. Uh, everything seems to be going well there and they're getting ready to shoot out their November schedule for all their activities, so.
Dave?
I have nothing tonight, sir.
All righty.
Uh, Public Arts, we met and now we're in the process of looking at the sculptures for next year. Sent out requests, so we get those back and decide on those actually like in, uh, January or late January. And EDA is meetings tomorrow, so we don't know, there is some interest in town for some, uh, building going on, um, so. Lot of positives on that from both housing and commercial.
You know, I did have one thing, um, we have our forum for city council tomorrow night at six thirty.
Well, good, I can cross that off then.
So, yeah, so it'll be right here at six thirty.
All righty, uh, Matt?
Um, two things, well, actually three things, first, uh, just a reminder to RSVP for the recognition event if you haven't yet. I think the deadline's actually like next Wednesday or Thursday, I think by the end of the month, but.
We didn't get those sheets in for the last meeting, I thought we.
You may, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm saying in general, I don't know who's all submitted theirs and who hasn't, but just kind of a, a reminder of that. Um, then obviously we noted the, um. The canvassing results, that'll be at three forty-five, and then we have a budget workshop at four o'clock. On November twelfth, that'll be on enterprise funds. And then lastly, um, obviously we had a resident address the council tonight regarding the topic, um, I'm just looking for any direction from the council. If there's something that you want staff to pursue, or if that's something you wanna think about a little bit longer, um, but obviously. Uh, the direction would be up to the council on whether or not you want us to, to pursue anything, or if there's anything you want me. Well, he's obviously still here, if you want me to communicate back to, to that resident regarding the, the issue that was brought forth.
I was getting asked the city attorney, uh, Mark, what is the current state law for distance from a building, from an entry?
Yeah, frankly, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, if you, if we could get that information, I think that would be best, so we know what the current law is. So we can just, you know, if we need to emulate that or we need to change.
Our, our current city ordinance is fifteen feet, um, we said the county has a ten-foot. My understanding from what I've looked at, and I don't know for sure, I think I was looking at the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act, I think they leave it up to municipalities. Or the governing agencies to, to make that determination, I'm not aware of a, a general. Statewide, across the board requirement, but, you know, so.
I think I'd like to discuss it some more.
I think look at the, at the law, yeah.
Yeah, just, uh, maybe not answer you on here tonight, but I mean, we gotta talk about it and address it at our next meeting.
Sure, we can.
Some investigating on it.
Yeah, we can, uh, get some more information and, and bring that up to you, so. And then the, the last thing is just a reminder, offices will be closed November eleventh for the, that's Veterans Day, um, holiday, so. But yeah, we will gather some information and we can have that as a discussion item at our next council meeting on the twelfth of November, so.
All righty, um, I did have, we did have HRA meeting, um. Park Towers, we do have, uh, some vacancies there, so if somebody's looking for. Nice place to live and, cause we're protected well by the platform truck, so. On the housing, uh, side of stuff, uh, this is for August of this year. Uh, we had twenty-three new listings for houses for sale. Um, actually, uh, brings up the inventory for houses for sale in Hutchinson to thirty-two houses. We have for sale in Hutchen, uh, average sale price, uh, for August was. Three hundred and one thousand dollars for a house, so. Otherwise, uh, that's it, uh, just reminder, um, leaf vacuum, vacuum means what's going on?
Day after your garbage is picked up.
Day after garbage, uh, please put them in a nice winroll, which means a nice long stack. Not big piles, um, otherwise, uh, that's going well as far as I see them going around, so. Besides that, uh, let's hold on.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn, any other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Post a name, motion carries.